We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor McLean, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Bless us heavenly fathers, we enter 2017 and make this new year our best.
Yes, Jesus.
Bless each counselor as we do our good deeds for the city and keep a guiding hand over our administration and their works. Keep our police department safe, their job is not easy, but with your guidance, we pray they go home safe and sound.
Yes.
God bless us, our city. We need to come together and fight the evils of drug addiction and crime.
Yes, Jesus.
Guide us to find a way to do this, in your name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Here.
Counselor McLean.
Here.
Counselor Lowe.
Here.
Counselor Crayer.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Glenn.
Here.
Counselor Miles.
Here.
And Counselor Nixon.
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
We need to add a Communication Number 10 for the Allen County Planning Commission to our agenda.
Second. Motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda by adding Communication Number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Item A be received, filed, and approved, and Item B be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve Item A, and to receive and file Item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 1.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place property maintenance assessments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Communication Number 1 be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 1. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 2.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to sell property at 449 McFerrin Avenue.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Communication Number 3 be received and filed.
Second.
How about Communication Number 2? Be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 2. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 3.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Northwest Property.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Communication Number 3 be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 3. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I can ask Susan Croddy to maybe come up and speak. My question is, we're down, we're going with one contractor, one withdrew that was going to be awarded. I know the residents are going to have a concern with being able to get all the jobs done in a timely manner. Normally, I think the last three years at least have had two contractors, and we've split this work up. So, as well as the residents, I know I'm concerned that they'll be able to handle this. And I wonder what provisions or discussions you may have had with them.
Well, we have talked to Northwest, and I believe they have actually, I think there was a year in the past when they were the only contractor that provided the service. They do have the capacity, and from our experience, we do feel that they have the capacity to do it. If there are any issues, please be sure and let me know if you hear that there are any problems with it. But, you know, that is the only bid that we received then that we could award. Again, we, you know, we were going to utilize the services of another, but they declined. So, at this point, we're confident that they can manage it.
All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Glenn.
Ms. Crady, I did have some issues with them in the past. They correct the issues. So, I mean, that's booked in, Ms. Odom, I forgot Ms. Odom already. She came and picked up another, because they had got behind one time there, once sometime, real bad. It was rushing their work, and they were leaving things behind. So, they picked up another contractor then. Now, like I say, that'd been like four years ago. It could've gotten better. Everybody get a new opportunity. But I'm hoping they can do it, though. So, but they said they can do it. No, I talked to the owner a couple times, and he always makes sure they do things decent and ordinary, so.
Okay. Yes, we will monitor that, and, yeah, I believe that they have worked with another contractor in the past, partnered with another contractor when necessary, so.
Yep.
But we'll make sure that they do keep to the agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 4.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to amend City Code 232.03 and 238.05.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that Communication Number 4 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 4. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 5.
From the Auditor requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Harris ERP.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Communication Number 5 be received and filed, and the Law Director be authorized to prepare any necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 5, and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 6.
From the Mayor regarding the appointment of Lisa Bradley to the Civil Service Board.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I move that Communication Number 6 receive and file.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 6. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 7.
From the Mayor regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Rhodes State College.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Communication Number 7 be received and filed.
Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 7. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
It's on the night's agenda.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I thought you said receive and file. Okay. Never mind.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 8.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding new permit to indulge in Midwest at 1740 North Union Street.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that Communication Number 8 be received and filed, and the clerk be authorized to file with no objections.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 8, and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 9.
From Downtown Lima Inc. requesting continued financing.
Mr. President.
Counselor Lowe.
I move that Communication Number 9 be received and filed, and referred to the Finance Committee.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 9, and refer it to Council's Finance Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number 10.
From the Mayor regarding an appointment to the Regional Planning Board.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that Communication Number 10 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next on the agenda is reports of officials. Joe Gearing regarding the stormwater plan.
So, a couple weeks ago, hopefully you guys got one of these stormwater plans in your mailbox. So, we're required to submit this to the EPA. This is what we're going to do as a city. Nothing has really changed in regards to the six minimum controls, with a few. I'll go over the six minimum controls real quick. The public education and outreach, number one. The public participation and involvement. Elicit discharge and detection and elimination. Construction site runoff control. Post-construction runoff control. And pollution prevention and good housekeeping on the municipal operations. So amongst all of those, we've got a few things that are changing. The public involvement, how we anticipate to get the community involved a little bit more is we're going to do and adopt a roadway. We're going through the specifics on that, but we'll give an opportunity to kind of, you as a resident, or we're hoping to get businesses to kind of adopt a block, litter control and everything to kind of keep it going in the storm drains and to the receding streams. As well, on the involvement, I will mention, it's not new, but the tree rebate program, we do have a tree rebate where businesses or homeowners can receive up to a 50% reduction on the tree itself, as well as the installation, so material and labor for a tree. We'd really like to get the word out on that. With all the trees that we've lost over the years, an opportunity for us to replant some The second change is the construction site runoff. In order to kind of coordinate a little bit more with the contractors, developers, we are requiring pre-construction meetings. So, we'll be meeting with the developer and contractors to help alleviate that. And the big change is in the post-construction BMP operation and maintenance. So, anytime there's a development within the city, and you're going to increase the runoff of your site, you have to put in some sort of BMP or best management practice to control the release rate. So, that's been in place for decades. Per EPA, you now have to maintain and operate that. So, annually, we'll be getting some sort of confirmation from the property owner that this BMP has been maintained. That's the big one. But that had to be in place a while ago, and we've just now gotten the tools to get that into place. And those are the changes to the stormwater management plan. Any questions?
Thank you. This is Ordinance 117.
Letting special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Ordinance 00117, do you pass on its first reading?
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 117 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
And Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 117 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 217.
Authorizing the Mayor to enter into a contract with Patrick Staffing for contracted services for the 2017 calendar year.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 217 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 217 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
No.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
No.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 217 has been passed on its first reading by a six to two vote. Ordinance 317.
Authorizing the Mayor to enter into a contract with Northwest Property Maintenance Services for property maintenance services for calendar year 2017.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Ordinance 317, do you pass on its first reading?
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 317 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 317 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 417.
Authorizing the Mayor to sell 449 McFerrin Avenue, Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Ordinance 417, do you pass on its first reading?
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 417 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I just wanted to note that this is properties in the 5th Ward, and it sounds like we're going to be selling to a very responsible party. Glad to get this off the books for the city. And went by the home and also looked it up, and it's like a diamond in the rough, so they're getting a good home. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 417 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 517.
Amending Section 232.03 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that Ordinance Number 517 be moved to a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to place Ordinance 517 on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 617.
Amending Section 238.05 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that Ordinance Number 617 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 617 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 617, excuse me, has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 717.
Authorizing the Mayor to enter into an agreement with Rhodes State College.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Ordinance Number 717 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 717 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
Derry's promised me to keep his miscellaneous to three minutes. And we have the President of Rhodes State here, and I think on a night, you can come out on a night like this, possibly to call upon her to come up and have any additional comments to the legislation. Also, some board members are here also, and we'd welcome any of their comments.
Good evening, President Nixon, members of the Council of Merberga. We're very pleased to have arrived at, hopefully, this point with the city. It's been a long time coming, certainly due to no hesitancy on our parts, but certainly hesitancy coming through some small issues with the state in making certain that everything that is put in place has the appropriate legal reading, and so it has taken considerable time in that regard. Other than that, I think we're in a good state and prepared to move forward. Certainly, the funding entities have asked with a great deal of excitement when the project will begin and when we'll see some bricks coming down downtown. So, I think we're prepared to go and to continue to have these discussions with the city with regard to the full management of the project.
Thank you.
I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCurdy.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I just had a couple things. I'm very excited about this project from day one when it first came up, and I'm hoping all other city councilors have the same support there. I'm involved with a thing tank out of Dayton, Ohio. We set up with 85 developers that we all come together once a month. And one city councilor, a small community, he was saying that how great it is in Lima, Ohio, getting that opportunity for develop downtown. He was explaining how hard to get a target downtown, a main resource that going to create jobs and money downtown. Because these days, smaller city like ours, it's hard to bring in these big corporations downtown. And he was saying that how great we are by getting this, and I hope that everything vote right and stuff. But he was saying, man dear, you guys are blessed, because we've been trying our hardest to work very hard to do this, to get something in our area, you know? But I'm very excited about it. I've still been on, excited about it. I can't wait till it happen. I know the folks in my ward have been very happy about it. I haven't heard no one that said any negative thing about it. They always saying they can't wait. They waiting for that building to come down, so they can say that, hey, we had it, it's coming. But this piece here, this ordinance here, will take us to that step, so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Glenn. Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
And Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 717 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Miscellaneous business, Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, looks like everyone made it through the new year. Yeah. And a happy Christmas, I hope.
Mm-hmm.
I know it was good at my house, so really appreciate Santa Claus coming and visiting, and got to see little grandkids, so. Just remember, take care of your neighbors. Look out for the older folks, they're going to get a little cold this week. And if we get some of that white stuff, I'm not even going to say the name.
Be quiet about it.
And just make sure you look out for your neighbors. Some of them are elderly, and they may not be able to do what you can do, so help them with their shoveling and their snow blowing, and I'm sure they'll appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. Counselor Lowe.
Thank you. This past year of 2016, we did not receive very much communication from our Civil Service Board whatsoever. And there wasn't a meeting called at all. And I understand that there was some sickness and some changes with board members, but I would like to call a meeting that may, with Human Resource, that would fill us in on what's been going on. We haven't had any kind of communication whatsoever with the Civil Service Board, and I would like to make a motion that we call a meeting for January 23rd at 6:00 PM to update us on what the Civil Service Board had accomplished in 2016, and what their plans are going forward.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to call a meeting with the Civil Service Board to review their 2016 progress and 2017 plans. Is there any discussion? I have a question. Does that go to Human Resources Committee?
Well, yeah, I'm not, I think Mr. Lowe's intent was to make it a Human Resource Committee meeting.
It should be a Human Resource.
Yes, it matters already in the Human Resource Committee.
Okay, so we don't need a direct referral?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Basically, call it an HR committee meeting, and I would assume asking the clerk to notify the Civil Service Board and request their presence.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Ms. Salas, did you get to January 23rd, 6 o'clock?
January 23rd, 6:00.
Okay. And the other thing is, I would like to invite, this month is probably the first break that the high-octave drum line has taken in five years. And it's well-deserved, but I do want to put the word out to the community. There's a lot of kids that need something to do besides hit a baseball, or shoot a basketball, or run a football. And there's so much talent, and I know that there's a lot of talent in the area schools. We meet at the Bradfield Center every Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Every second Tuesday, we actually feed the children. We teach them how to read, write, and play music, from ages 8 to 88, if you want to. But we are, I'm pleading for parents to bring their kids out. I took a tour not too long ago over at JDC Facility, and it was full. And there was more kids there than it was at Drum Line Practice. And there's more kids there than I see in a lot of different positive organizations that's having things for kids to do, for youth to do. So, I'm asking, if you know of anyone, please, you can contact me. My cell phone number is 419-371-3383. And get your children involved. It's a very, very good program. We are sponsored by our Lima local Rotary Club, the Lima Rotary Club, and the Bradfield Center. And we have three teachers, one being myself, instructor as a city councilman. We also have Mr. Pilot Bradley, who is HR Director at Honda. And we also have Mr. George Davis, who is one of our own firefighters here in the city of Lima. We've got a good group. We've got about 60 years of, 60-plus years of talent amongst us. So, we're asking, and this goes out to anybody, anybody, male, female, human or alien, you can come and join our organization and go have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Two things tonight.[1535.86] Uh, two things tonight. Um, first of all, I would just like to invite anyone to come to our Riverside North, uh, Neighborhood Association meeting. That's Thursday, this Thursday, seven o'clock at the Red Cross. Uh, we're gonna talk about personal safety, and we are having a really good time at that meeting. So, if you're looking for something fun to do on Thursday night with a bunch of, uh, Lima-loving, God-fearing, tax-paying people, come to that meeting. Um, and then the other thing is, I would like to, uh, congratulate our former city council president, Matt Huffman. Today, he was sworn in as our state senator, so just, um, pass the word along of congratulations to him, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer, uh, to the Traffic Commission. A study at East Elm and South Collins Street, uh, there have been, uh, some recent accidents at this location, and talking to residents, it's had a history of some accidents. So, I'd like to refer to that committee.
Second.
Thank you. That's all.
The motion, the second, is to...
A, a traffic study done at East Elm and South Collins.
Traffic study at East Elm and South Collins to the Traffic Commission?
Yes.
For staff to report back. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Adams.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes. Uh, first of all, I have a couple of people. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, have a great New Year. Uh, I had a lot of folks calling me about the bus stop. I take bus, and what they was doing, they were stopping in different directions, and, uh, had an opportunity to meet with the executive director, the R.T.A. They are working on a plan to give a bus area, a bus stop, so people can go to it. So, I'm making a motion. I told her I was gonna send it to our Safety Service Committee, and I'm making a motion to send it to Safety Service.
Second. Move.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, I'm not done, I'm gonna finish it up a little bit. And, uh, we was gonna send it there, and, uh, we're gonna have her come in, 'cause she got a plan that they're gonna work on putting bus stops in our city, so people can go to the areas and wait on the bus, instead of stopping in the middle of streets and holding up traffic. You know, a lot of folks was very complaining about that. So, I was glad she had a plan put together, and she was gonna come out to our Safety Service meeting, uh, on January the ninth, which is cleared through our chairman, Ms. Miles, at five-thirty.
Uh, it will be after?
After our...
Our other meeting?
Our other meeting, it'll be after our other meeting, so it'll be about six. But she willing, she got a good plan together. She's gonna bring the plan out, so it can show what they plan on doing. Uh, we will have bus stops, like other cities have, that bus stop where people can sit there and wait for the bus to come and pick them up, instead of picking them up in the middle of the street. So, that motion's there, it'll be second.
I want to clarify your motion before I try to state it.
Okay.
You want to refer to Safety Services Committee?
Mm-hmm.
A designated bus stop location plan?
Yes.
R.T.A.
Yep, great job.
There's the motion as stated. I can't say anything. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Right. Anything else, Mr. Glenn?
I got one other thing, though. Yeah, I got one minute left.
You made promises.
Yep, but I want to thank everybody that donated for them hundred fifty kids last Friday. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Thank you, Fresh and Fade. We had a hundred fifty kids that needed toys, thirteen and older, and we made it happen for them. So, thank you guys so much. That's a blessing. The kids was happy, and, thank you. I'm done.
All right, thank you, Counselor Glenn. Counselor Miles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, want to say Happy New Year to everyone, and welcome to a, a year of new beginnings here. For those, again, I say, I always say, those who believe in the power of prayer, join with me this year for our city, and plant, and praying against the spirit of homicide, suicide, and addiction. And those, those are the things that I believe are plaguing our city, and so I just really want us to kind of join together and just, and just pray against it. Homicide, suicide, and addiction. All three of those things have been evil spirits in our, in our community. The Westgate Neighborhood Association will meet, uh, Sunday, January fifteenth, at six-thirty P.M. Uh, it's held at Chamberlain-Hunkery Funeral Home on Cable Road, and our speaker for our January fifteen meeting will be our fire chief, Mr. Bruce Black. All are welcome to attend. And I also, lastly, I would like to, um, to applaud our mayor here for, in two thousand fifteen, we talked about the disparity in the number of minority employees that was being employed by the city. At that time here, the number that I have for two thousand fifteen was six point eight percent of the, um, employees in the city were minorities. Um, and so, you know, I've seen, uh, efforts put forth to hire more minorities in, in the city administration, and I applaud the mayor and his efforts, 'cause it was something that we stress, myself and several other, um, council members stressed, that that was definitely a need. When you have a city with a minority population of over twenty-six percent here, there is a need to have the proper representation in the city administration. So, I applaud the, the recent efforts, uh, by our mayor and his administration to hire more employees. What I would like to see from Mr. Oger, our H.R. Director, is a, is an updated report showing the minorities, um, percentage, which I think now, with the recent employment, it should be pretty much, um, seven point six, seven point seven versus the six point eight that was in two thousand fifteen with the new addition. So, I would like to get an updated report from Mr. Oger. He gave us one in two thousand fifteen that showed, uh, employees by, uh, male, female, and also their location as far as where they work. So, if that could be communicated to Mr. Oger, I would like to have an updated report for our next, um, council meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miles. Counselor Gordon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, I move that council pass an oral resolution in support of the Allen County Lima Railroad grade separation project, and that the council president be authorized to send a confirming letter of support for the project to the Ohio Department of Transportation, um, Transportation Review Advisory Council to approve its, uh, draft two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty, uh, major new construction program list, which includes four million dollars for the Allen County Lima Rail Railroad grade separation project.
Second.
And if you want the copy of it, here it is.
Motion, and the second, is that council is authorizing by oral resolution the council president to send a letter in support of the grade separation project. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Who wrote this?
Yeah.
I submit the lawyer wrote this, but it is probably sound and legal. Um, all those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Is there any further?
That was a lot to say and not breathe, but thank you, Mr. Griger, sir.
You got it all, man.
But anyways, yes, I do have, uh, just two more things. Um, I want to praise, uh, Mr. Capralla and all the employees of the, the Water Department, and, and how everybody, um, you know, just jumped on that problem that we have with the boil water situation, and, you know, we, we know there's some bugs to work out in the future, but, uh, you know, them guys worked all night long, and, uh, you know, I, it, it was something that that thing was done in the morning by the time the, the businesses opened up. So, you know, the, and not only you, uh, don't get your head big over there, Mr. Capralla, because your guys, your guys that, that helped you, everybody that was out all night working, I mean, you know, that's an awesome thing that, that you guys pulled it together and got through that situation. So, so, you know, I just want to give you guys some praise, and you pass that on to, 'cause like I said, you're, you know, I want your head to get too big, so pass it on to the guys, too, please. And the last thing that I have is to remind people to be good to each other. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Uh, there's no further business?
Mr. President?